Why is this not showing me?
Okay, so this review is going to be dealing with chapters six and eight study sessions. I don't know why it's opening this way. See. There we go, that's better. No, what? There we go, that's better. Okay. Anyway, sorry, my Zoom was like not letting me log in. It was like frozen or something, so trying to find a little. Pen for this, or I guess that's not. Anyways, chapter six and eight study session. This is when we're covering mostly just genetics information, so let's get into it. Alright, this is our study sheet information for chapter six. Just to keep this one in mind. I am going to be referring to it as we do go through it so that we can, you know, just basically. Talk about this information as we're going through. I'm gonna do our usual rundown on the whiteboard. I don't know why it doesn't record better. When I record it, but I still feel like it's pretty useful, especially when people are actually like participating on it. But yeah, so I'm gonna do that first. I'm gonna get this out of the way of that, sorry. Alright, perfect. And let's go into this whiteboard. Alright. So starting with chapter six, chapter six obviously was dealing with just that general concept of genetics and basically what. You know, when we get to talking about what genetics even is talking about with genome, what the heck is a genome? What the heck are nucleotides? What heck is DNA? What? These things are and what they mean for us whenever we're learning about how our cells operate and why they operate the way that they do. So, starting off with that. Basically, the basic building block of all of this is going to be the genome. And of course, that genome is just talking about the genetic material. Oh. And then we deal with the chromosomes, which are like the structures that make up the genetic tree. Where is the genetic material kept? Where, what is this genome? What does it consist of? So that's the chromosomes. Okay, this is great. That's what I get for having three screens and I'm like having to like shuffle between the three of them. It gets a lot sometimes. Alright. So those are some of our key concepts here. Probably after that, the next two things that I would suggest that you. That everybody be kind of aware of would be that comparison to compare. And contrast genotype and phenotype. Where, when we are doing that and approaching it from this angle, the genotype. That's the genetic story. Whereas the phenotype. Is what's seen or expressed. For example, you might have genes from the maternal. And genes from the paternal. But only. One is expressed at a time. Please just fill the whole thing. Okay, perfect. So now that we have have that, as we move on to what DNA is and how the structure of it and how it is built and all this stuff. So for DNA. Let's go ahead and add some bullets. No, oh, sorry, that's not what I meant. And bullets. Perfect. What is DNA? It is deoxyribonucleic acid. These, each individual nucleotide that makes up DNA, whether we're talking about the A, the T, the C, the G, any of that. Those are all going to be based off of deoxyribonucleic acid. For DNA. Sorry, somebody's trying to call me. Oh, it's BS. Okay. Um. So right, so that's deoxyribonucleic acid. So much we'll get into good gear here in just a minute. Um, those. Main. Nitrogenous. Bases. It's this thing. A five carbon. Sugar. Also known as pentos. Okay. Um. So there are three parts. There's the five carbon sugar. There's the phosphate. And the actual nitrogenous base itself. Oh, this is saying nucleotides. I'm so sorry. What do you guys need to worry about with the nitrogenous base? Well, I mean, there are perimetines and there are. Purines, but I don't need you to tell me the difference. What, I would just know what the different four are. ATCG or AUCG. For DNA or for RNA. So these nucleotides. A, that's adenine. G, guanine. C, cytosine. And G, or did G, T. Thyne. Okay, so that's great. So we understand a little bit more about the nucleotides and the structure of DNA and how that is going to spell out the genetic code for us. That codes for every single gene that you could have in your body. It's just the language that your genes speak. That's all this is, so. Um. It's also going to be two strands. That run opposite from one another. And what does that mean? That means that the. Sugar. Phosphate backbone. Which works an awful lot. Like, let me try to draw it. Oh. Try to draw it with this since I can't find my. I don't know where it is, my pen is. This is actually like one of those most frustrating things. Probably like just right on the floor, right under my foot or something. I don't know where it is, but anyways, if we were drawing it. Um, yes, so we have a sugar and a phosphate. We'll make a square. I don't know. And then a sugar. And then a phosphate. And coming off of our sugars, we'll have the A. Or the T, or the C, or the G, or whatever it is. So this whole piece right here might be called a nucleotide. So, so if this is a nucleotide. So hard to type right with a mouse. Alright, so if that is the nucleotide and then this whole part right here. That's the sugar phosphate backbone that we're talking about. Okay, so you notice now right now we're starting off with sugar and then going phosphate. And then there's sugar and then there's a phosphate and then there's a sugar. I'll even put this, that was supposed to be an S, so it was a really beautiful S in my mind. And this was a P. And then this is S. And this is P and whatever. And going over and over again. It goes the opposite way on the other strand. So the other strand will go this way. Or you will have sugar and then phosphate and then sugar. And then. And I feel like if I draw it, it'll make sense. But anyways, in this A, because it's not going to go across to the phosphate. But it will go across to the T over here. And then this C will go across to the G that's on the other sugar over here. And this is looks ridiculous right now. And of course, it makes so much more beautiful sense when we're looking at on the chemistry level, realistically drawn. But you get the idea at least of what it means to be having your backbone strands running in opposite directions. And then your complementary strands bonding across to one another because A binds with T and so on and so forth. This will give us that idea of how. That is set up. So we can take a little bit of time to look over that. But anyways. So opposite direction to one another. And that term for that is anti-parallel. One of the newer terms that we have so far. Whether we're talking about the bases or the DNA or deoxyribo, we've pretty much gotten kind of familiar with those, these anti-parallel and stuff. We just don't use that at times, so it's a newer term, but. Alright. Those strands of A pairs to T and the G pairs to C. Those are hydrogen bonds. Okay, um, perfect. Okay, so when we're making copies of the DNA, when we have to make a new cell, we have to make a new copy of our DNA and everything like that. Um. It's just one of those days, you know, there's a lot going on. Um, yes, so we have to split those two strands apart and. Okay, yeah, we're making copies. We call that replication. And we will split those complementary strands apart. And after we've split those complementary strands apart. Now we can get to the nitty gritty of it, right? The problem is that we're looking at this giant genome that is huge and long. We can't just like split it apart and then that's that, but. Instead, you can split it apart at like just the one spot that you're trying to make a copy starting from. And you'll go out from, open it up, and then you'll go out from those openings. And those are called replication forks. Okay, perfect. And then now that we have split those strands and we're ready to make that copy, we'll use one side or strand. As a template. To create. A complementary matching copy. And so we have an old strand and an old strand that work together right up next to one another. We've now split them apart. And we'll make a new copy of where we had one, make a copy that's complementary. So now we have two here, where we had one, we now have two here. So one is old and one is new for this one, and one is old and one is new for this one. This is a process called semi-conservative replication. Maybe. Alright, cool. So we've got some concepts building. So in order to replicate, we will add really. Have nucleotides in the five prime to three prime. Direction. This means that like on this sugar. That we had looked up here at the top. This sugar, maybe like this is the five prime. I'm really trying to draw a little like nodule here, but that might be the five prime. And then this would be the. Three prime. That is dealing with just how they numbered those carbon molecules. That's all it is. It doesn't actually mean or do anything. But then the same thing, the orientation is the opposite on the other side. So this one would be five prime. And that one down here, it's on the sugar. We don't care about the phosphate for this part. Let's call that one the three prime. Okay, so the five prime to three prime direction versus the five prime to three prime direction. Going the opposite direction. And that is basically what's determining the direction of that sugar phosphate background backbone. And you can only add nucleotides with regards to where the five prime and the three prime are. In that direction, that given direction. So that is how that's added. You don't have to worry too much about that. I'm not going to ask any questions about. What do that really means? And a five prime versus a three prime, but I would be aware that it is only added in the five prime to three prime direction. You don't need to describe to me what that means, so. So just be aware of that. Anyways. Writing those in five prime to three prime direction. It's semi-conservative. We have an old and we have a new. We have a replication fork opening up. Um. Because of how that replication fork opens up. One strand is going to synthesize smoothly as we move through replication. Because we can just move straight through in that five prime to three prime direction. But the other strand, unfortunately, as we open up that replication fork. Will have to be made in fragments. The ones made smoothly, we call this the leading strand. Let's take out the sentence. I don't remember if that's leaving. So one strand smooth, that's called the leading strand. The other strand is in fragments. That's called the lagging strand. And the fragments. That are generated. From the lagging strand. They're called Okazaki fragments. It's just the name of them. And they have to be sealed together. And we use DNA ligase for that. That's pretty good. Alright, so let's move on. Next part, next concept. So for this part, we're going to get into, so we replicated our DNA. So now let's go ahead and make our RNA. So now this is our DNA. To RNA. Transcription is the term for that. Alright, great, great, great. So RNA is ribonucleic acid. And it's going to consist of. Oh my gosh, whatever. It's just gonna say that one. It's annoying. Ribonucleic acid, it's going to consist of the same exact parts. It's going to be made of nucleotides. So we also have a phosphate here. We also have a five carbon sugar. Which is also known as a pentos. In this case, this sugar is ribose. What is this word? It's the word I wrote and I don't even know what I'm trying to say. Okay, ribonucleic acid, we have a phosphate, we have a five carbon pentose, that's ribose. Um, and then we also have a nitrogen base. In RNA bases. Whatever, are going to be A, U, C, G, so no T this time. But otherwise, it's somewhere. So we have adenine. Uroicil. Cytozine and guanine. Um, and then um, just like DNA, A pairs with U and C pairs with G. So we're just replacing that T with a U. Just think of it as being next in the alphabet. If I were to say, you know, what? You know, I probably won't if I'm being honest, but um, if I were to ask you what letter we use instead of T, it's the one that comes next. Because after DNA comes RNA. In the whole um, RNA, DNA to RNA to protein dogma. So anyways, uh, so that's the idea. So we've got that. Let me see. Right, so RNA, messenger RNA. So what are its functions? Let's talk about that. Yes, so RNA functions. It could be messenger. It can be ribosomal. Or it can be transferred. And what these guys do. Messenger RNA carries the message of the gene. To be read by the ribosome equipment. And the T RNA. To make the protein product. Ribosomal RNA, that is what makes up the structure of ribosomes. And transfer RNA carries the amino acid that correlates with the messenger RNA sequence. We'll talk about that in a moment. Um, basically that messenger RNA sequence is determined by codons. Three ribonucleotide. Nucleotide, right? So A, U, C, G. So every three makes up a codon. And that'll code for a specific amino acid. Alrighty, um. And then the anticocon is the complement on the T RNA that will allow for reading a codon uh, to tell which amino acid to add next in the sequence. Make sure I'm not missing a thing. Alright, the steps of transcription. Really. Remember, transcription is going to be DNA into RNA. The steps are going to be initiation. And that's just where the RNA polymerase. Remember, if we're talking about making copies of DNA, that's DNA polymerase. And now we're talking about making copies of RNA. So that's RNA polymerase. It's making polymer, which is a repeating unit um, of these structures. So polymerase. But anyways, so um, this is where the RNA polymerase will start. Um, elongation. Again, same rule here. We will add the nucleotides of the RNA in the five prime to three prime orientation. And then um, termination just occurs when you get to the end. I mean, so you get to a signal in the gene that says that you're at the end. Okay, that's straightforward enough. At least there's that. Transcription. Ucarides. Alright, 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 okay. Um, there is a unique difference. Ucarides. Okay, actually, we'll add multiple here because I don't want to forget one. Unique differences between basically bacteria and ucarides. Like us. Um, ucarides. Transcription must occur in the nucleus. Bacteria don't have a nucleus. So the transcription occurs um, within the actual cytoplasm itself. So any part of the cell, basically. And this will be in the nucleoid region. That's just where the um, sorry, the janitor guy is about to come in here. I can hear him. So I'm just warning you. Um. This is just where the chromosome is. Okay, um, here is another one. Uh. Ucarides. Have introns and exons. And I'm going to clarify what those are, but an intron um, is kind of a nonsense part of, a non-coding will such be formal and say that, so. There's a code for anything, and exons are the parts that do code. And those will have to be cut out. Uh, cut out the introns and splice together the exons. Okay, so um, the in the Ucar- the bacteria don't have to deal with any of that. So that's their advantage there. So here, really quick, I just want to add something like the note that I'm just writing up here. Those three nucleotide codes in DNA, that's called a triplet. In mRNA, that's called a codon. And in T RNA, that's called an anticocon. Okay, so just FYI so that we know the difference between those and we understand that they're different things. Mm-hmm, okay. Alright, let's move. That's good. I'm happy with that. That's transcription. Um, I'm going to move on to translation. So in translation, we're going from RNA to make protein. The way I remember this, um, that what helps me to know is that DNA and RNA are, they're basically the same language, right? They're speaking in nucleotides. So we're just rewriting it. We're just rewriting this nucleotide message into that nucleotide message. And by writing, now we're talking about scribing, right? Um, whereas if we are talking about going from RNA that's in the language of nucleotides. And protein is in the language of amino acids. These are different languages altogether. And that's why whenever we go from RNA to protein in translation. Um, that is basically translating in a different language. So we'll just say that. Alrighty. Translation. Why am I having such a hard time seeing what I'm doing on this screen? Anyways, basically what happens in translation, we are going to have a ribosome which consists of ribosomal RNA binds to messenger RNA. And then the codon of the mRNA is matched to the complementary uh, anticocon of the T RNA. Oh, they'll match up. So A to U, G to C, we've mentioned this. Um. I keep getting emails. Um, so T RNA. And that carries the amino acid that matches the sequence that we're basically um, have written out in our genetic code. And so we're carrying on to the right, the correct amino acid. It comes and sits in a spot, or not a slot even of the ribosome. Um, and then whenever we go to the next slot over, the next T RNA matches the next codon, and then it carries the next amino acid. And the amino acids are linked together by peptide bonds by the uh, ribosome. I can't type today. Okay, so this cycle will continue until a stop codon is met. And then the ribosome will disassociate. Of course, that's not the end of the story because if you want to add any sugars or anything like that, then you'll have to add them on in the smooth ER. And then once that's added. I hate it when my husband says things to me like, I bet you know what day today is? And I have, I have no idea. What day is it? I'm no clue. Anyways. Um. Cool. So that's basically a translation in a nutshell. So we've gone through replicating our DNA and we've um, gone from DNA to RNA, and then we've gone from RNA to our protein basics, right? Our next step is we're going to be getting into a little bit more detail about some of the other stuff going on inside of like bacterial cells and everything like that, like something that tends to be kind of difficult for a lot of people, which would be the lack operon and everything. So let's go into the operons. I hate them. By the way, I just want to make that clear. Not my husband, the operons. Um, definitely the operons. So operons are basically um, multi-gene multi-gene um, gene product sequences in bacteria only. We do not have these. So you have basically control of producing a whole, whole bunch of or not a whole, whole bunch, but like a couple of genes and gene products, like proteins that are being produced that are related to producing other things or controlling other things. And they're all related, but they're all controlled by like one signal. That's an operon. Alright. We have two kinds, inducible and repressible. Don't overthink it. What do you think of, if I were to talk to you guys about, you know, inducing labor? Could be causing the labor to happen, right? Pushing it to happen. Because it's not happening on its own. So that's exactly what's going to be going on with inducible operons. In the inducible operons, the operon and its products are off unless they get a signal to turn on. they get a signal to turn on. That okay. That's pretty, that's fine. I'm happy with that. That's good. That's the inducible version. If that is happening, the thing that is going to be the signal to turn on is called the inducer. For repressible operons, these guys are always on. And they'll be turned off when we don't need them anymore, when the bacteria doesn't need it anymore. And that is controlled by the binding of the repressor onto the part of the gene in front of the promoter, which is where RNA polymerase so it blocks it. That's a lot, that's more detail. For the same, pretty much the same things going on with the inducible, actually. There's a repressor just sitting there, and then whenever you get the signal, the inducer, it comes along and interacts with that blocking action of the repressor. It makes it so it doesn't block anymore. You don't need to talk about that. You don't really need to understand it. What you need to know is it's inducible, and something comes along and turns it on. And it's repressible, something comes along and turns it off. It can be repressed. It's repressible. What a weirdo. Oh, bats. Sorry. That means nothing to you. Sorry. Didn't mean to yell that. Okay. My life is so weird sometimes. Apparently, it's bat appreciation day, like bats, like that fly and stuff, those bats. Bat, because why wouldn't I know that? Weird. Anyways. Okay, so that's that part. What else do we have going on for us if we are bacteria? Well, we also have horizontal gene transfer. So this one's a good one, too. I know we've gone over this like a million times and probably could use to go over it just a little bit more. So horizontal gene transfer. This is anytime you have transfer between two bacterial cells. And this is not like genetically, like from mama cell to baby cell. This is not from original cell to daughter cell. This is only going to be from two separate cells between one another, right? So that's what makes it horizontal. Otherwise, it would be vertical. So that's the term for that. So it's two bacterial cells. And there, here are some ways that we can do that by a conjugation using the sex pilus. Or we can do transformation, which we've learned about in lab. And we acted it out with those pipe cleaners and the plasmids and everything like that. So that transformation experiment, that was when we pick up exogenous DNA. Oh, I should be right. So this will be competent cells and pick exogenous. And so stuff, DNA that's outside of the cell. And then transduction. And this is going to be gene transfer thanks to exogeny of temperate phases, when they become prophages, right? And insert their little viral genome into the bacterial genome. Okay, and then now let's add another page, I guess. Let's do the mutations. You can have, of course, you could have point mutations, which is a single nucleotide. Which one A, just one T, just one C, just one G. Whatever it is that can lead to the change in the amino acid sequence, one amino acid change can lead to a complete overhaul of the structure of the protein. And that itself can be detrimental to an organism, a whole organism. Alright, let's do that. Let's talk about the different types of mutations. Misense, nonsense, silent, frame shift. Okay. Misense is whenever we have a change in the, the resulting amino acid. So instead of you know, I don't know, AAA being the code for lysine, now it's AGA causing glutamate or something. These are just random examples, but yeah, if I were to say that on a test, original, original code was AAA, which coded for lysine. Now it's been changed. It's not AAA. It's AGA, which is just one point mutation. But we've gone from lysine to glutamate. It's a different amino acid. So that's a misense. In a nonsense mutation, what was an amino acid is now a stop codon, which is no amino acid. Which is why it's nonsense. It codes for not an amino acid, not a helpful thing. The amino acid doesn't change, even if the nucleotide does. Because remember, T, I don't know, TAG, I shouldn't use T, but let's say AAG. Right? I don't know. And that, that codes for serine. I don't know. And AAG codes for serine. And now AGG is the new code, but it also still codes for serine. The protein doesn't know. It still has the same amino acid. That's all we care about is the protein product. So that's a silent mutation. Alright. So like AAG, which codes for serine, got to change. It's not AAG anymore. It's AGG, but it still codes for serine. Your body wouldn't know. It's silent. With the frame shift is a shift of the entire reading frame. And that's usually due to deletion or addition of typically just one, but sometimes two amino acids or two nucleotides. It's like opening a book and deleting two random letters in the entire book, but keeping the the basic shape of each of the words the same, just shifting the letters within that shape. You'd not be able to read it very effectively. At least at first glance, right? So that's the idea with the frame shift. So it can be very severe. And ruins everything downstream. Okay. Let's move on to chapter eight. Well, I guess we'll talk about restriction enzymes. I, sure. So restriction endo nucleases. These come from where's my cursor? Whatever. They're originating in bacteria as a defense against any unwanted foreign DNA. And these guys will cut at very specific sequences in the DNA. And those are for palindromes. And they read the same forward and back. So that's where they'll read and recognize. And then they will also create those six single strand hangovers called sticky ends. And these can pair with other complementary DNA sequences from other bits of DNA that may have been cut with the same enzymes. So that can allow you to put pieces of DNA into other pieces of DNA, and that's what they've been used for historically in genetic engineering. Okay, so perhaps some sticky ends, stick them into that same spot, and all that. So oh, didn't mean to do that, but whatever. Let's go back. Yeah, CRISPR has a similar function. So the, the restriction endo nuclease enzymes that are made by bacteria, they are only able to cut at very specific palindromic sequences, whereas CRISPR could be used to cut at any DNA sequence. And do this. They don't need a sticky end either. Alright. Let's move on. Nuclear acid. This one, nucleic acid hybridization. We learned a little bit about this in the diagnostic procedures as well. I think it was better explained there, actually. But here, just to mention them briefly of what they are for, we have complementary DNA sequences that can be used to probe for the presence of other, of matching DNA. So they're going to hybridize. They're going to come together. Next, we have PCR. This stands for polymerase chain reaction. These are not the ingredients. Okay, so the ingredients, things that are actually needed. Do you need polymerase in polymerase chain reaction? Of course you do. But there are other things that you need as well, such as your template, whatever it is you're making a copy of. You have to have something there, right? To build. And you have to have primers, nothing, anything, anywhere, whether you are making copies of your own DNA or anything, you can't add it to, nothing. It has to be added on to the end of something else. A lot of times our body uses RNA as a primer for that. In the case of things like PCR, you can use DNA primers. That just gives something for the polymerase to add on to. So any buffers, just keep everything stable and happy and has all the content, like your nucleotides that you're going to build on as you're building your new toppies. Yeah. So so this just makes copies of nuclear acid. Each round doubles. One becomes two, or two becomes four. That's it. Okay, let me make this bigger. Yeah, you only need one, one DNA to start with. But you do have to have a known target. So you'll target specific sequences with those primers. So it's not like you just snap your fingers and pop it into PCR and you have a yes or no answer. You have to have the right primers and you're really only asking, is this Ebola? Is this strep? Is this COVID? You can't just throw something in there and be like, tell me what it is. That's not how it works. To be clear. Alright, let's go over the steps. You will have denaturing. And then we're going to use heat to do that. So that's denaturation. Then we will have annealing. That means of the primers. So the primers are sticking to their target sequences. So we can build off of them. Then we will have elongation or polymerization. That's the lengthening of the copy strand. And then you'll just repeat. That's it. Your next step, you might be running it on gel electrophoresis to be sure that you're making the copy that you want, or maybe you ran your sample on gel electrophoresis to help purify what DNA sample you wanted to work with. Either way, gel electrophoresis is a pretty useful concept. So when we're talking about gel electrophoresis of DNA, here we have movement of negative charged DNA that's from that phosphate backbone to the positive electrode. Because negative is going to move to positive, right? It's going to be repelled by more negative. So it's going to move to that positive electrode. The larger fragments get stuck in the gel more easily. Say more easily, it's really, I don't want to make it confusing. I won't say more easily, it's really, I don't want to make it confusing. The larger fragments get stuck in the aggro's gel. And so they move. Slower. The smaller. Move faster. Okay. Um, so yeah, so the smaller ones are going to move faster through the gel. So that's going to be, um. You know, pretty, pretty. Predictable. So then, uh, the smaller ones run faster. They're going to be near the bottom sooner. And so that's how you can tell the different sizes of those. All right. All right, why can't I? Here it is. Okay. So moving on. Uh, talking about cloning now. How, we're going to make all these copies of the DNA and what are we going to be doing with that? And let's say we're going to be cloning into certain vectors and stuff like that. Um, right. So cloning can be introduced into, um, whatever host organism. Um, using the following vectors. Let me actually see cloning vectors. Will include, um, plasmids. Which are DNA, they're small circles. Of DNA that only have a few genes on them. Oh my God, just. Or, um, you could also for cloning. Or use viruses or bacterial phages. Okay, so those are all of our options there. We can use, um. Artificial chromosomes. Or extra, um, or plasmids. Or viruses. Then the viruses will insert the DNA for you. And then that is called. Transduction. Yeah. Didn't really care that much about a, uh, genome sequencing, except that it does give you more perspective on the, um. Single nucleotide polymorphisms. So. A single. Nucleotide. Polymorphism. Or S and P. Is when. A single, literally a single nucleotide. Can be changed. And cause, um. Various effects. On an organism. Or not. It's just basically looking at whether or not a single change in a nucleotide can have a detrimental or a beneficial or whatever. No effect on an organism and how, or the outcome is. That's basically all that's talking about. Um, genome sequencing helps with that. Okay, so, um, secret can help put that in perspective about how serious that may or may not be. Next, we have GMO and transgenic organisms. That's the same thing. GMO. Or genetically. Modified. Organisms. Are the same. That was transgenic. Organisms. Um, that just means that we've changed them genetically somehow. That's really all it is. Uh, we have changed them, um, usually. Uh, you know, we might add a, a thing or, or change a gene so that something is more resistant to a pesticide or something is more resistant to. A certain chemical or is more likely to be able to, um, you know, create more. Um, muscle meat for consumption and stuff like that. So that's what GMOs are referring to. And then finally, we have gene therapy. This is referring to, um, manipulation. Of, um, what we might, might consider to be mutations in a gene that isn't functioning properly. And then introducing a functional gene version into the person. Hopefully permanently. So this can occur on the, uh, somatic. Level. Or the germ line. So somatic, these are just like your normal existing body cells. This is. Not going to be able to be transferred to any offspring. But germ line, now we're going to be affecting. Even the, um, gametes, so the sex cells. And so all the future offspring. Will receive the benefit of this change. Okay. Wow. Okay, so that's that part, um. I was going to go through all these other slides. Let's see if there's something I'm like really missing. Um, I'm going to switch off of this real quick and just walk through these other slides because I'm going to post them online. So that you guys can access them separately. Um, so I don't want to sit here for a million hours going over this. I'm sure you guys. Wouldn't want to sit here watching me go through this for hours. So let me switch, um, really quick back to. This one, this one. Okay, um, so I do have, I'm going to post these online for you guys. Uh, but real quick to walk through them, I've got, um, our questions that are involved in the, um. Chapters we're going over, so it's chapter six and then chapter eight. In the notes, in the slides themselves, when I do post them for you guys, there are like some notes on these. Um. So if you guys wanted to look through those, there might be more information in the notes that could help you out, but, um. So I have our open ended questions for these. Um, it looks like one of them I missed the answer on, so I will add that in really quick, but on the ones. Ones I haven't added in the answer. Oh, right. I have to click. That's why, because it is, okay. It just looked weird on my screen. My apologies. Um, so yeah, you know, question and then the answer when you click and whatever. And you guys can go through these and, um, and look through them and find out. Uh, you know, ask yourself these questions and see what you think you understand or know about the topics. And I've gone through the questions and everything and most of these should be, um. At least the concepts should be familiar with you guys. So yeah, it'll be a little bit of a, of a concept test to go through this stuff, which I highly recommend if you guys can understand these questions. And, um, understand the answers that are going with them. I think it'd be beneficial. I usually love to walk through these with you guys. Um, for this one, just describe in detail the process of gene expression. This is basically asking you guys to go from gene to transcription and then translation. And in what parts of the cell this would all be happening in your karyotic cell, using the appropriate terms. Describe everything in the notes for this one. I have written out the description of, um, the answer for this one. So you would have to actually access the notes for that. And then I have some links to some helpful videos that go over replication and transcription and translation for you guys. Some of them are short. Most of them are like, uh, you know, anywhere from five to, uh, like, I think one of them's 12 minutes tops, so. Watch which ones you want to, or look, go look for yourselves, um, to find more online or use the ones that are on. Um, there are videos available through McGraw Hill on your textbook. And God forbid, we actually use it, so. Um, please, please make use of those. This, I know this is, this is the difficult chapter. So, um, take your time to understand this one and contact me if you have any questions. But this is all I'm going to be going over. Today, um, in, in this study session, so, um, probably leave you with this, so, um. But yeah, that, that's my end of it. And I know Valerie, you're the only one on here who's actually, I'm watching physically right now. I don't know if you have any questions or not. But.
I'm good. Thank you.
Awesome. Great. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and leave it at that and, um, get this posted for everybody. And I'll get these slides posted, um, right, right now, actually. So thanks for joining and I'll see you guys next time.
Thank you.
Thanks.